Welcome to the October 27th formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. Thank you so much for joining us today. I will call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Ansari. Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilwoman Guadado.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Well, we have Elsie Duarte here with us to provide interpretation services. Elsie, will you please introduce yourself?
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, my name is Elsie Duarte and I'll be serving as the Spanish interpreter for today's city council formal meeting. I will now take a moment to introduce myself to the Spanish-speaking audience. Hola buenas tardes, bienvenidos a la reunion formal del consejo municipal. Mi nombre es Elsie Duarte. Estaré sirviéndoles hoy como intérprete en nuestra audiencia de habla hispana. Deseamos pedirle de antemano, al momento de dar un comentario público, favor de hablar despacio, con claridad, y evite tener distracciones de fondo. Finalmente, haga una breve pausa de cada, en cada uno o dos oraciones para poder interpretar lo que esté diciendo de la manera más completa posible. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Elsie. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordnances number G6906 through 6907, S48008, 48015 through 48071, and resolutions 21968 through 21972.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor, do we, oh, I'm sorry, before we move on, I'll turn to our city attorney to talk about the role of public comment in city council meetings.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on agenda items to be discussed. Comments must be related to the agenda item and the action being considered by the council. General comments that go beyond the scope of the agenda item must be made during the citizen comment session at the end of the agenda. Speakers must present their comments in respectful and courteous manner. Profane language and personal attacks on members of the public, council members, or staff are not allowed. A person who violates these rules will lose their opportunity to continue to speak.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on item one?
Motion to approve mayor and city council boards and commission nominations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please signal nay. Passes unanimously. We next move to the liquor license portion of our agenda. The city of Phoenix serves as an advisory body for the state. Do we have a motion on items two through 14?
Yes, Mayor, motion to approve items two through 14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please signal nay. Passes unanimously. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning, and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes. Motion to approve items 15 through 104, except the following. Item 15, 16, 17, 19, 36, 44, 54, 55, 69, and 73. Items 63 and 38 are requested to be withdrawn. Item 60 is as revised and excluding these items for public comment, 47, 69, and 72.
If I may clarify, if I may clarify, it's item 36 and 38 are requested to be withdrawn. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion from the vice mayor and a second, I believe, from Councilwoman Stark.
Yes.
Any comments or corrections? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Guadado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Item 15 is mayor cop association of government dues. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 15.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Good.
We have a second from Councilwoman Ansari. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCecio.
Item, uh, Mayor, I missed the actual item number. What was it?
Item 15, mayor cop association of government dues.
Oh, that's right, no.
Guadado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes. Yes.
Stark. Waring.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego. Passes seven two.
And is everyone comfortable if we take item 16, 17, and 19 together? National League of Cities, Arizona League of Cities, and Alliance for Innovation? Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on 16, 17, and 19?
Motion to approve item 16, 17, and 19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
I apologize, DeCecio.
No.
Guadado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven two.
We next move to item 44, which is a contract with our COVID-19 public health consultants. Do we have a motion on item 44?
Motion to approve item 44.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Councilwoman Pastor. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCecio.
No.
Guadado.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven two.
We next move to item 47, Phoenix Public Library Annual Application for Arizona State Library Grants in Aid of Funds. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 47.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We do have one member of the public to address the council on this item. Mark Rodriguez.
Hello, Mayor Kate Gallego and everybody at the Phoenix City Council. It's good to all hear from you again. It's because I go all to the libraries all the time because I love the library, because I like to print stuff from the computer and I love to get books and graphic novels and mangas from, renting from the book, library books at my sister's childless library because I like the public library. It's kind of fun to go over there, Mayor Kate Gallego, and I hope you have a great time over there and everything that, all that stuff in the library to having good fun to read and go on computers and go on everything and all that stuff. And, you know, I love having fun at the library, Mayor Kate Gallego and members of the city council, including you, all of you guys. And also, I love to shout out to Yasemin Ansari, Betty Wangato, Laura Pastor, Deborah Stark, Ann O'Brien, Jim Waring, Sal DeCecio. You know, you're not my type of thing, Sal DeCecio. Not a fan of you, man, but I respect you, but I just wanted to be respectful to you, Mayor, because I like talking to you all the time. It's because even though Halloween is coming up, because I like to say Happy Halloween to all of you guys, because I love Halloween because I can't wait to pass out all the candies and all that stuff and I like going to the libraries and all that because it's kind of fun. And Mayor KG, yesterday you got your card. Inside the card, there was pictures of me and you and all that. If you know, Mayor, I like talking to you and I hope you guys send me a birthday or Christmas card because my address is 7722 South 72nd Del, Levine, Arizona, 85339. And so, I always love to say that and you guys are awesome. You guys are cool and you guys, everything, what you say about all the stuff at the agenda of the formal meeting. And that's all from me, Mayor. Have a wonderful day. Happy Halloween.
Thank you so much, Mark. Thanks for supporting our libraries. Councilwoman Ansari.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mark, for calling in. It's always good to hear from you. I think you and others will be happy to know. I'm excited to be voting yes on this item. This grant money will really benefit workforce assistance and early literacy outreach in District Seven and beyond. I just wanted to specifically highlight the incredible workforce resources that one can find at Acatillo Library, which is in my district and which will benefit from these funds, whether it's resume writing to interviewing skills sessions. I'm very happy to see additional outreach efforts going towards libraries like Cesar Chavez and Desert Sage and other areas with most needs. So, very excited about this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think this will be an important, I'm looking forward to supporting the vote as well. Big fan of our libraries and their workforce efforts. I was at the library yesterday to support my young ones' love of, at this particular moment, snakes. Any additional comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Guadado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes. Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next move to item 54, the 2022 Downtown Enhanced Municipal Services District Budget Assessments and Set Hearing Date. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 54.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCecio.
No.
Guadado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes. Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego. Passes seven two.
Item 55 is the 2022 Downtown Enhanced Municipal Services District Assessment Diagram. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 55.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCecio.
No.
Guadado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gallego. Passes seven two.
We move to item 69, the Airport Concession Relief and American Rescue Plan Act. Do we have a motion? All right, we will then begin with public comment and go to a motion after we hear from the public. We have many residents who are here to address the council on this item and I'll ask staff to call their names.
Our first speaker is Gonzalo de la Malena, followed by Jawair Abbas. Gonzalo, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Great. Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Gonzalo de la Malena. I'm a small business operator at Sky Harbor Airport for the last seven years. Wanted to share my appreciation and gratitude for your support to date in 2020 when you allowed us to go to percentage rent for all of 2020 and 2021 and also the small business grants that were allocated in 2021. I also wanted to let you know that the small businesses lent our support extensively to the Airport Council International, the Chambers of Commerce, and work with our federal elected officials that helped shape some of the big federal grants that came down to airlines and airports and really talk about the role and contribution that concessionaires played. We know that airlines received over $50 billion in relief. Airports will receive in excess of $18 billion. And finally, in the third act, after two rounds of CARES Act, the CHRISA Act, and now the ARPA Act, concessionaires, the third leg to the stool, got a small allocation of $800 million, which equals 1% of the total allocation, of the total grants that are happening in the aviation ecosystem. That 1% allocation of grants means a lot to us, the small business operators. It'll help us cover our rent. That money is going directly to the city, to the airports, does not get passed along as cash to operators, but instead, the money goes directly to the landlord at the airport to help us cover the rent during these challenging times. And when I talk about challenging times, you know, the workforce is challenging, our vendors are challenged, we've been able to work to try to pay down our debt, we've worked with our banks to kick our debt down the road to future payments, and there's really been a shift in the employers, in employees, really, to the gig economy, to the Amazon economy, and we're all working hard to try to recruit and retain our valuable employees. So, wanted to put that in context and say thank you for your consideration today.
Our next speaker is Jawair Abbas, followed by Stephen Douglas. Jawair, are you on the line? Jawair is not on the line. Stephen, our next speaker will be Stephen Douglas, followed by Magdalena Acosta. Stephen, are you on the line?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Hello. Oh, great. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Stephen Douglas and I'm a vice president of Development for HMS Hosts. I'd like to start by thanking you for the continued support and partnership as we navigate the COVID pandemic. Many of your operating partners would likely not have survived if it were not for the work of city leaders such as yourselves and others around the country. We're proud to report that we've reopened 25 of 29 restaurants and even with the national hiring challenges, we're above 70% of 2019 staffing levels. HMS Hosts and our small business partners are in full support of the ordinance before you today. We believe this provides a win-win scenario, providing desperately needed funding for our operating partners and full payments to the city. We understand that the FAA is preparing guidance for the allocation of funds to ensure a fair distribution to all small businesses regardless of the structure of masterlies. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Mayor, I have questions. Yes, I have questions for this caller.
Please go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. So, we've heard from a few callers over the past weeks about not having been called back to work after their initial furlough while the rest of their peers have. Can you please share with us the number of associates you've recalled back to work?
Absolutely. So, we had 785 associates on our callback list and we called back 763 of those associates. Of those called back, 468 accepted positions and 295 declined positions. Today, we actually have 12 people remaining on the recall list. We've offered them all jobs in different classifications than the job they had previously and to date, they've, they've elected to remain on the recall list and wait.
Okay, and can you tell us in your efforts in hiring additional people, how many have you scheduled for interviews and then what is the number of people who did not show up for those interviews?
So, we don't actually formally track no-shows, but from some recent hiring events, we had actually registered 214 people to interview and 173 did not show up for the interviews. So, 41 of the 214 showed up for interviews. And in addition, we've hired an external firm to help with our recruiting and they were hired in mid-to-laid summer. And of 118 jobs offered by this, this firm, we've actually only been able to hire 15.
Okay, and are you offering any retention bonuses or referral bonuses?
Absolutely. So, we have a referral bonus program. So, if you refer an hourly associate, you get $250 and that's for as many associates as you can refer. It's 250 per associate. We have a $500 referral bonus plan if you refer and we hire a manager. And again, the same thing. If it were two managers, it'd be $1,000. We have an appreciation bonus in place, which is $200 per month. So, we had first payouts in July, so payouts July through October for Phoenix were over $330,000 in additional compensation to those associates. And company-wide, it was over $6.5 million.
And under the new, um, sorry, no, I apologize. I know in conversations that I've had with some folks that cooks are one of the hardest positions to hire right now. Could you explain a little bit about what, what impact that the lack of cooks does to your business's ability to serve?
Absolutely. So, we, I mean, basically, we want to provide the best service that we can for the traveling public and for the city of Phoenix. So, if, if you don't have enough cooks, it's going to basically back up your, your, your system. You know, if you were to, for example, offer your full menu, it's going to be a lot more complicated, a lot, a lot more time for those cooks that you do have to be able to execute that menu. So, for many reasons, what we've done to try to combat that and still provide great service is to streamline the menus. That's done for a couple of reasons. One is some of the supply chain problems that we're having, but two is really for the ability for our cooks to be able to execute at a high level and, and for the traveling public to be able to have the best service possible.
So, you mentioned the supply chain issue. So, are you having trouble getting products?
Absolutely. So, on a regular basis, we're having supply chain issues. So, for example, last week, we, our local supplier of, or our supplier for milk ran out of milk. So, we had to go locally to procure the milk that we needed. We're having regular delays. Some of the suppliers are having trouble getting enough truckers, for example, to deliver the goods. So, we're seeing consistent and regular delays in receiving the products that we need. And it's not only the food, it's equipment, you know? So, if equipment needs replaced, getting that replacement equipment is taking substantially longer and the costs of the equipment and the food have substantially gone up as a result.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Douglas.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Our next speaker is Magdalena Acosta, followed by-
Mayor.
Is that Councilwoman Pastor? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I have a question for the caller, the previous caller.
Wonderful. Mr. Douglas, are you still with us?
Can you hear me? I'm here.
Wonderful. Thank you for staying on the line. Do you have a moment for some questions from Councilwoman Pastor?
My question, my question is that you had stated that there is a recall list and workers prefer to stay on that list. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, ma'am. So, we had, we have 12 people that are still on the recall list because the positions they had before COVID have not been brought back online. We've offered all 12 jobs in other classifications, other jobs, you know, and they've elected to, to wait for their, for their original classification.
Okay, so if they're waiting for their original classification, is that because the jobs that you offered are at a lower rate than what their original classification was?
I don't have that information, but I could get it for you.
Because I'm a su, I'm not going to use that term. I am thinking that if they're on the recall list, say I'm a cook and I'm on the recall list and my job is not coming back, but then you're offering me to do another position that doesn't pay the same, then I have to, or I make the decision, do I take that job or do I stay on the recall list to get the position that I was at and get paid where I was, where I was at?
Councilwoman, I just received some information that they would receive no less than the pay they had received. If the job required additional pay, if it was a higher classification, they would receive the increase in pay, but under no circumstance would they receive less pay.
Okay. So then, my second question to that is, being on the recall list, if I took, if I took the position that I didn't originally have, then am I stuck or do I have to stay in that position? If my position opens up, can I then go to my position?
Absolutely, you could go to your old position.
Okay. Then I'm not understanding why they would, I mean, I understand that, I do and I don't understand why I would stay on the recall list. So, that, I'm just curious about that. But thank you. Thank you for your answers.
You're welcome.
Mayor. Mayor.
Councilwoman.
Oh, I've got a couple of questions too. So, you talked about supply chain issues, you talked about inflation, you talked about workers having a difficult, you know, having a difficult time hiring workers. What makes you any different than anything else that's going on in the economy? It's happening everywhere. Everything you described as a problem is happening throughout. The only thing is, the hamburger joint down the street from me is not asking for millions in dollars in bailout, a federal taxpayer money. So, you're not facing anything different than anyone else. Your location might make it, but you got to pay more. If you want the employees, you got to pay more. It's as simple as that. Dairy Queen has already raised, I think they're over $18 an hour now in some locations. So, if your location challenged, you pay more and you'll get the employees. You're fighting for a limited number of employees in the market today. So, what makes you unique?
Councilman, I would agree that we do have the same challenges as a lot of restaurants and businesses on the street. We're doing everything in our power to combat it. We, we took up wages on May 7th between 3% and 8%. We took up cook wages another 4% in September. So, we're doing everything we can to, to try to manage this the best that we can.
Well, so you're no different- Well, so you're no different than anyone else, but you're asking for millions of dollars of subsidies, of taxpayer money. People living down the street that have asked for no money. I still don't see why we need to even grant this to you because you're no different than anyone else. Except that you're asking for millions of dollars and you're a multinational, international company worth billions of dollars. And you want to be bailed out. And I find that so offensive because I'd rather pay off the guy down the street than I would somebody who doesn't even live in this state. So, or has their main operations in this state. It just doesn't make sense to me how anybody, regardless of where this money comes from, whether it's federal dollars or not, to do a corporate welfare buyout of a company that is facing the same issues as everyone else. You're not... There's nothing here we haven't heard or read about. There's nothing new. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Any additional council member questions for Mr. Douglas? All right. Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you.
Our next speaker...
Here, this is Councilwoman Guadalupe. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, now I can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And I think that was a sound check. So we're going to go to our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Magdalena Acosta, followed by Jason Silberschlag. Magdalena, are you on the line? Magdalena is not on the line. Our next speaker will be Jason Silberschlag, followed by Anthony Alexander. Jason, are you on the line? Jason is not on the line. Our next speaker is Anthony Alexander, followed by Nava Singham. Anthony, are you on the line?
Hello, I'm here. I'm sorry.
We can hear you. You may proceed.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Anthony Alexander. Good evening or afternoon, members of the Phoenix City Council. I've been working for SSP America on and off since 2017. I worked for multiple concepts, Match Big Breakfast, Nokowich, LTQ, multiple different concepts for the commissary. And just throughout the pandemic, things have been rough. My family in particular, because I was furloughed for quite some time, up to... It was almost a year I had to find another job and things were just rough. With the challenges of finding work and the challenges of COVID, it was just rough on my family. I got behind on bills and other things of that nature. But I just urge the Phoenix City Council to believe our workers and not give the wealthy airports any more relief. You know, like throughout the pandemic, I believe the workers need the most relief. And still to this day, even though we're back working, there's some people that are still behind on bills. So I just... I'm new to the council and I just wanted to make my voice heard and try to do the best that I can for people like me and my situation. And I just urge everyone to vote no on to the agenda. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Nava Singham, followed by Ashley Alvarez. Nava, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You may proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm in support of this item and would encourage you to vote yes. I'm Nava Singham and I own Kind Hospitality, a 100% ACDBE entity. Currently, I operate restaurants at Sky Harbor as well as other restaurants in three other airports. I can share that the three other airports have begun the process and have applied to the FAA for the ARPA fund. As you know, all of our cost of product has gone up in price as it has in our local grocery stores. And we have also increased the wages for our employees and managers so they can have a quality of life with the increased cost of goods at their local grocery stores. These actions have added tremendously to my cost structure on my business in this recovery period. I'm not able to raise my menu prices as quickly as the cost of goods or the labor costs as they have risen so fast. Because that would totally be a sticker shock to the traveling passengers. So being able to receive the ARPA fund from the federal government to pay our rent will allow us to reallocate these dollars to location enhancement and/or employee retention and welfare. Again, I thank you for the time and I sincerely hope that you all will vote yes for ARPA dollars to help us through these challenging times. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ashley Alvarez, followed by Gregory Torres. Ashley, are you on the line? Ashley is not on the line. Our next speaker is Gregory Torres, followed by Dawn Amenden. Gregory, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can hear you. You may proceed.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor and council, Gregory Torres, my company, Torres International, has been a certified ACDBE since 1999 doing business at Sky Harbor. First and foremost, I want to thank you, Mayor and council, for your past support on the percentage rent and the contract extensions. Candidly, those two actions have enabled all the companies to continue to grow, to bring back employees, and continue to be a part of the airport program at Sky Harbor. I believe wholeheartedly in this ARPA funds because I also believe that the federal government will not come back with any more funding. And I think these dollars not only will come in and support all the vendors at the airport, but also all the vendors that all of our companies buy goods and services from. So it's an economic windfall at the end of the day. And again, I really appreciate and hope that all of you will support this item, and I thank you for your time today.
Our next speaker is Dawn Amenden, followed by Scott Welding. Dawn, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
We can hear you, and you may proceed.
Okay. Good afternoon, esteemed council. My name is Dawn Amenden and I live in the city of Phoenix in zip code 85032. Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport is placed fifth place in the overall customer satisfaction index ranking, down from first place in 2020, in part because of the food and beverage concessions program at the airport. I'm opposed to this form of corporate welfare in most part due to the loss of very much needed positive revenue to the city's corporates for running and improving our city. And I strenuously object to giving this selfish and neglectful billion-dollar corporation any more so-called rent relief when they haven't lived up to the previously set stipulations for acceptance of this relief and continue to run at staffing deficits. I ask the council to remember this is a $14.2 billion corporation and don't believe they will shut down if they have to pay their rent. I strenuously object to this. Please vote no. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Scott Welding, followed by Ari Behrenhuber. Scott, are you on the line?
I am. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. This is Scott Welding and the Vice President of Business Development for SSP America. I'm on the call to echo what those before me did in favor of this relief. These ARPA funds are vital to our ongoing operation at the airport. And, you know, really, what I would like to do is just be able to answer any questions that any of the council members may have of me. But thank you for this time and opportunity.
Thank you. Did we... I'm sorry, did we have a council member to ask a question?
Yes, it's Councilwoman O'Brien.
Go ahead, Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Welding. Are you still there?
I'm still here.
Okay. So can you tell me a little bit about the onboarding process of once you have offered a job to an employee?
Sure. So through the recruiting efforts, we offer a job to an employee. The next step is really to get those associates into the badging office for their fingerprint background check. Sometimes that can take a little bit of time for scheduling, a little bit of time for results to come back. And then when we do have the green light to proceed, then we bring them onboard and go through all of the company protocols, procedures, et cetera, and then hook them up with other managers and/or associates to start their training program within the location they're working.
So can you tell me about how long it takes to get scheduled to get a badge and then... How long it takes to get scheduled a badge?
Sure. Well, I think we're all struggling with the labor shortage at the moment. And certainly, the timing to get in for that has varied from, you know, just a couple of days up to three weeks. Been working with aviation staff over the past three or four weeks to help us with that, and they certainly have expedited that. But it can be very time-consuming and in the period of time that we're waiting for those results, many times those potential associates will find other employment.
And when you're talking about getting results, where are you getting results from?
They have to clear the federal background check to ensure that they're able to hold a badge to access secured areas in the airport.
Okay. And do you have any idea how many employees you might have lost who go to find another job while waiting to get cleared through the federal process?
I don't have a number. No, I would say that it's a lot. It's difficult. It's difficult to keep people engaged, even if we keep them on payroll and wait for, call it, three to five weeks. There's other opportunities that will scoop them up.
Okay, sir. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ari Behren...
Mayor? Mayor?
Councilwoman Pastor?
Is the gentleman still on the line?
Mr. Welding, are you still with us?
I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Welding, I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked Host. How many people do you have on your recall list?
You know, I will answer that, but I probably don't have the statistical data like Lian and Will when she speaks, if she hasn't already.
Oh, okay. I can ask her. I can wait.
Yeah, I know we're down to really just servers and bartenders and locations that we haven't been able to get open. It's kind of the cart before the horse issue, meaning we need to be able to serve food in locations before we can bring servers and bartenders back. And we can't find those back-of-house positions. I echo what Mr. Douglas had to say with Host. So, you know, if we could get those locations open and staff it back at house, we would have 100% exhausted our recall list at this point.
Okay. And then the other piece that I have is that aviation staff meets with me weekly. And one of the comments or one of the discussions we have is the fact that SSP has not opened up where Host has opened up and has been serving the public. And so my question to you is, Host and SSP are in a similar industry. What is... I guess I'm curious of what, why you think Host, or not, not why you think, why SSP is unable to hire the way Host is able to hire?
Well, I think if I could backtrack to May, when we first had our discussion with the airport director about reopening locations, we were quite a ways behind HMS Host in terms of percentage of our total locations open. We have six sub-tenant operators inside of our lease as well, so they own and operate a total of eight spaces altogether of our total. But I want to say that we were in the 50 percentile back in... Right now, we're hovering just below 80% of our total locations, including our sub-tenant ownership. And honestly, we would have 100% of them open if we could just get the employees back to do so. Over the past, call it, five or six months in trying to do that, we spent a lot of money in recruiting efforts. We've created our own landing page for employment. We've put a lot of incentives in place for not only new hires, but existing associates and retention incentives and to just, you know, word of mouth, bring people in. I would say we've spent, you know, probably $150,000 on those efforts over that time period. And it's literally a trickle of applicants coming in our doors and actually making it through the process and starting into our locations. So while our friends at HMS Host are a little ahead of us, we're certainly trying to get there. We want to have all of our locations open right now as well.
Okay, I just need to clarify something. Did you say in May you were at 50% and you're saying right now you're currently at 80%?
Yes, we're just beneath that. I believe it's 78% of our total locations.
That are open?
Yes, including our sub-tenants. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Ari Behrenhuber, followed by Lianan Jacobs. Ari, are you on the line?
Indeed. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
All righty. Well, good afternoon, members of the Phoenix City Council. My name is Ari Behrenhuber and I've worked at Barrio Cafe in Terminal 4 for about seven months now for HMS Host at Sky Harbor Airport. Throughout the pandemic, you know, me and my family have struggled essentially paying rent, getting access to health insurance. I don't think I have to tell you guys that it's been a very trying time for working families throughout the city. You know, I urge the council to believe what workers are saying and not give wealthy airport concessionaires any more relief. Enough is enough. I mean, throughout this pandemic, the council voted three times to provide millions of dollars of relief to wealthy airport concessionaires, which resulted in these corporations paying limited rent to the city of Phoenix for 16 months. Where is the relief for workers? I mean, I do the job of two to three people on a daily basis by myself. And frankly, hearing executives from my company lie about where we're at is infuriating. People don't stick around, not because, you know, they don't want to work. They don't stick around because they show up and they're asked to do way more than someone should do for $13 an hour. Let that sink in. I'm doing two to three people's jobs and I make less money than folks street-side. I applaud Sal DeCiccio for bringing up the fact that the burger joint down the street is dealing with the same issue. But the difference is that burger joint is paying their workers 15 or 16 bucks an hour right now because they know they can't get workers. We have to go through security every day. We have to show up a half hour early for our shift to get on a Skytrain to even get to the security checkpoint in the first place. And then when we get there, we're dealing with discontented, angry travelers facing long lines, limited stock. And I have to provide them a quality of service that frankly, one person is not capable of doing. Not to mention, we are constantly undersupplied. We are constantly understocked. Our machines break and the company refuses to fix them. We have an ice cream fridge, a Blue Bell ice cream fridge, in place of what used to be a double-door near-walk-in freezer. It is ridiculous. This city needs to listen to the workers of these concessionaires who are at the airport every day. I am an airport stakeholder, too, and that is why I oppose this agenda item and I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lianan Jacobs, followed by Tamika Brown. Lianan, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and members of council. My name is Lianan Jacobs and I'm an HR director with SSP America. As in the past, we appreciate your consideration of this item. I just wanted to make myself available. available, like those before me, for any questions that you may have regarding the challenging employment environment or any HR topics that you'd like to discuss. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Mayor, I have questions.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Pastor, or, no, I'm sorry, Councilwoman O'Brien, and then Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you. Um, Lianan, I, I know staffing at restaurants across, across the country has been a challenge, can you give us an idea of how many people you signed up for interviews and the amount of people who do not, do not show for those interviews?
Yes, Councilwoman O'Brien, thank you. Um, since July 1st of this year, we have scheduled 482 interviews and 377 of those interviews did not show.
And how about, how many people you have offered a job to and the number that did not accept?
So of the folks that have showed up for interviews, we hired 91 of them and currently only 37 are still actively working with us.
Thirty-seven still working. And did you also have a recall list?
We do, uh, as, as my colleague, Mr. Welding, said, we've exhausted every classification except for a few servers and bartenders. Um, unlike things you might have heard earlier, we don't have anyone that, um, stayed on recall, when we say exhausted, it was truly exhausted, either they've been returned or they've refused to come back to work, we don't have anyone waiting except for those tipped positions.
For the tipped positions, and so did you have folks who accepted positions that maybe they didn't have to begin with, did they go into a different position?
Uh, some individuals did elect to come back into cashier or cook positions while they await to be returned to their original server or bartender classification, um, others have decided not to do that, but in reality, we've really just gotten to the bottom of those tipped employee lists where we're just waiting for, uh, the positions to become available, it's not a matter of more senior employees, uh, refusing to come back into other classifications, we just haven't gotten all the way through the list with the server and bartender positions available.
And how many back of the house positions do you still have, um, that you would like to hire in?
I'm sorry, would you repeat the question one more time?
All right, yes, back of the house folks that you need to hire in order to, um, hire your bartenders and servers?
Uh, I believe as of last week, we would need a minimum of 26 back of the house employees to be able to extend the restaurant operation to get those tipped employees back.
Okay. Um, additionally, our, our restaurant jobs tend to be somewhat transitory, um, and also you have folks who call out sick, have you noticed an increase in number of callouts over the last month or so? And how does it work when someone calls out sick?
Yes, Councilwoman, um, for employees, calling out of work is definitely a challenge and it's increased in severity as of recently. Um, in the last 30 days, we've tracked 119 callouts throughout all of our restaurants. With the current labor staffing challenges across the airport, we, we all know the operations are running lean, um, and then when these callouts occur, it's absolutely crippling. Um, you know, there are days where there are 12, 15, 20 callouts in a single day across the airport, and we have to react by moving staff around from other restaurants or modifying operations, and it's just not a great situation for our staff, for the company, or, or most importantly, the guests.
And have you, um, raised, uh, pay rates at all?
Uh, Councilwoman, we're currently, um, in the middle of bargaining, um, and negotiating a contract with Unite Here Local 11. Um, I can tell you that we are certainly motivated on, on both sides, I feel like, to get, to get this pushed through and to definitely work on our wages to meet the, the challenges or the competition out there across the, the city.
Okay, and what about your onboarding and badging process, can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yes, Councilwoman, I think Scott really, uh, was, was pretty accurate in his reporting.
Okay.
I, uh, uh, like he said, you know, the badging process definitely has the biggest challenge for timeliness, uh, there was a period of time where they allowed walk-ins for the initial fingerprinting process, uh, which was great because we didn't have a waiting period for, um, to be fingerprinted, but those wait times were often three, four, even five hours, uh, where our individuals were waiting outside for those appointments, so it was a challenge and people would oftentimes leave. Um, but to, to Mr. Welding's point, that the office has been very good at partnering with us, uh, we interact with them daily to try to get people in, squeezed in, to fill cancellations or any other spots they can block out for us, so while that is a little bit more of an administrative task on our end, they've been very open to working with us.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilwoman Pastor, did you have additional questions?
Yes, I do, I'm sorry.
Please go ahead.
Um, I wanted to know about, about the badge piece, if I'm on a recall list and you recall me, um, you call me to come back, do you pay for the badge or do they have to pay for the badge?
Uh, Councilwoman Pastor, uh, SSP America pays for the all badging costs unless the badge is lost or, um, lost by the employee, they would have to pay for that lost badge fee, but otherwise we cover all costs.
And what's the cost for the replacement?
Uh, depends on the number of occurrences, the first occurrence is at least $50 and the second one is 100.
Okay, so if I'm on the recall list, have been, uh, sitting there for a while, um, sitting, not working, um, then I misplaced my badge, which I always misplace my badge, um, I'm willing to come back to work, then I will have to pay $50 in order to come back to work.
Uh, Councilwoman Pastor, no, we have not had any experiences of anyone having lost badge fees. Um, early on in March 2020, when the first round of furloughs occurred, uh, we ended up doing an audit to collect as many badges as possible and to terminate badges with the badging office so that we could, uh, keep any unsecured badging issues out of the way, so I have not heard a single person that had a lost badge be upon recall.
Okay, and the reason why I'm bringing this up is because I'm hearing the argument about badging and security clearance, and, uh, and that's what's stopping people from getting a job at the airport, so that's why I'm questioning about the badging, um, and trying to understand, uh, what happens when they come back, when you call from the recall list, and if they don't have what is necessary, which is a badge and security clearance, um, then how does that all begin and how does that delay the whole process? So, um, thank you. Earlier, I heard that, uh, SSP was approximately at 80, 78 to 80% operating? But I was checking into the numbers and my understanding is SSP is at 63, uh, open at T3, and possibly at 71% open in T4. And the dynamic is, that I also have been hearing, is that they open and then they're closed within three hours, four hours. Um, so that is a challenging issue and problem. The other piece is that I've heard is that, in the, when I asked the question, my understanding is that, uh, there is less than 50% of the workers that are being rehired. So, um, I'm trying to put these, the pieces together to see, and you're on the line to say, this is the situation, and so that's why I'm asking these questions.
Yes, Councilwoman, I think if I understood you correctly, the, the question is around the staffing of those restaurants, I can't necessarily speak to the operations, I could defer back to Mr. Welding, but I can speak to the staffing, is that what your question was?
Go ahead, go ahead, speak to the staffing.
Okay, so currently, uh, we're at about 60% of our 2019 numbers, uh, while we have ebbed and flowed, uh, upwards quite a bit, um, you know, I, I revert back to my previous comment that we've hired almost 100 individuals, um, in the last 100 days, and 37 are left with us. So that's a huge amount of turnover and the people were able to add into the business, and it doesn't account for other attrition that's happening in our, in our active population. Uh, we've attempted to recall every single associate that previously worked for us, and unfortunately, the large majority of those folks did not come back to work, um, for whatever reason, whether they did not respond to the recall at all, or they had relocated or found other employment, um, it is not for a lack of not trying to hire these associates to have a full complement across the operation. We would like to make sure we have the staff to appropriately staff so that the workers are not left to work several jobs at a time and be, uh, put under that amount of pressure.
Uh, I would hope that, hope, hope so too, um, and I'm gonna go back to my question, uh, that I asked way previously, other speaker, was, um, why? Why is Host being able to operate and hire at the level that they're hiring and SSP isn't? What is the, the dynamics between, I mean, what is the difference between the two?
Councilwoman Pastor, I, I honestly couldn't tell you how our, how our friends at HMS Host do their, do their business, I can tell you that just in my general research, and obviously we're doing a very like-for-like process, but we have very similar, um, recruiting strategies, it sounds like they had quite a few more on their, on their recall list than we did to start with, I don't know if they had different amounts of success in recalling, I, I, I'm not sure. Um, I'm happy to meet with them and talk about it to, to help us or work together to, to solve this problem, that's for sure.
Well, I think that's a great solution and option, so, uh, I hope that you work together because we need to get our airport up and moving and at the capacity that we need it at, so thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mayor, may I ask a couple of questions?
Vice Mayor, please go ahead.
Thank you, um, just a couple of quick questions on, we've heard different, um, folks take different numbers on pay, and so wondering if you could give us a sense of what are your lowest and your highest wages? And then also, are folks working, are all your folks working full-time, are you having part-time people, um, are you having different, uh, differences in that or, or have more part-time or full-time people?
Yes, Vice Mayor Garcia, thank you. Uh, our positions for the team member roles are gonna start anywhere from 1225 upwards to 1655. Um, when we recall individuals to work or hire them from, as a new hire, they're all offered full-time employment, we don't currently have part-time workers, um, due to the shortage, they're also offered, uh, overtime as well quite frequently. Um, but I would like to extend even further that our average hourly rate across the airport employees is upwards of $27 when you include total fringe. Um, I think that sometimes we take for granted or we forget that message when we're talking to the outside public, you know, I understand that people on the street are offering employees, you know, $18 an hour to start a job at a Dairy Queen, for instance, um, and, and we definitely offer things that are above and beyond what you can find at street-side restaurants, uh, because we're airport employees and we have our contract with Unite Here and, and other things that are company-sponsored, with total fringe, we're averaging $27 an hour.
Can you explain total fringe, um, and, and then just to clarify again, every worker is full-time, you don't have part-time workers?
Yes, Vice Mayor, so total fringe, I would just, I would include the fact that we offer full-time, or, um, sorry, vacation time, paid vacation, all employees are offered a minimum of two weeks when they start working. Um, the health and welfare is, uh, company contributed, um, 401K offerings, uh, we also have the things like we pay for the badge, we pay for parking, we pay for the uniforms, we pay for, uh, free meal every shift, um, so that's just over, when you include all of these added benefits, that's what I'm talking to when I speak about total fringe. Um, we, I would say that of all of our associates, there may be two total part-time employees across the operation that are probably due to an accommodation request, but not because it would be part of the normal bidding process.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Thank you, just a question on the total fringe, are you still, are you saying that that's your total compensation number, or is that a different number?
Yes, Councilman, uh, speaking of, when you add all of the employee benefits, not, those benefits are broken down by hourly, they're making their total, their total hourly rate and then with the benefits, so this would be a total compensation or, yes?
Well, total compensation also includes your SSI tax and other things that you have to pay for employees, so are you including that in that number?
Uh, Councilman, yes, we would be, yeah.
That you're required to pay? Okay, so, it was a little misleading, okay, because you're giving everybody the, the belief that you're doing something outside of the norm, when in fact, this is done throughout most business, I, I, I work on retail, so I understand what you're talking about. So when you say total fringe to them, that's a word that I've not heard before, because it's not real, the real number that you use is, you, the real name is total compensation, so the people can understand it, you're also covering expenses that every other business has to cover, correct?
Uh, Councilman, I'm sorry if I was misleading in any way, I was trying to speak to the point of the things that we do outside of the general public, which would include those company contributed benefit and, uh, vacation repay, free meal, parking, badging.
Okay, and a lot of restaurants do that, living without the badging and the parking, they do that anyways because they get that, but they, a lot of them give discounted or free meals to a lot of their employees in order to keep them there, that's what's happening in the marketplace today. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, any other council questions? Wonderful, we'll return to public comment.
Our next speaker is Tamika Brown, followed by Barbara Castillo, Tamika, are you on the line?
Hold on. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm, hi, hello everyone, my name is Tamika, Tamika Brown, and I'm a resident of the city of Phoenix, area code, zip code A5323, and Phoenix Sky High Airport placed fifth in the overall customer satisfaction index, rating down from first place in 2020 in part because of the food and breakfast concession program at the airport, and I personally think that this, um, this rent relief is, um, unnecessary, and I feel that, um, I wished at the time last year, um, I was evicted out of my apartment for not being able to pay my rent, I also was, uh, I also worked, um, with HMS Host, and the beginning of last year, they let me go while I was laying up in the hospital for four days, and I was unable to contact them, and they let me go, um, right after I even gave them proof that I was in the hospital, and I lost my job, pandemic hit, I lose my other job, I get evicted, I wish at that time there was a rent relief for me so that I could still be able to be in my apartment right now, and now I'm living in a weekly struggle to get by every day, I have to struggle buying food, I have to struggle paying my room, and it's very, very hard. HMS Host knows that this is unnecessary and they need to do what's right and pay like everybody else needs to pay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Barbara Castillo, followed by Cassandra French. Barbara, are you on the line? Barbara is not on the line. Our next speaker is Cassandra French, followed by Charize Faith Harrell. Cassandra, are you on the line? Cassandra is not on the line. Our next speaker is Charize Faith Harrell, followed by April Hernandez. Charize, are you on the line? Charize, are you on the line?
Hi, yes. My name's Charlize and I'm a resident of the city of Phoenix, at zip code...
Charlize, we lost your audio. Charize is no longer on the line. Our next speaker is April Hernandez, followed by Harley Jackson. April, are you on the line?
Can you guys hear me?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. You may proceed.
Good evening, members of Phoenix City Council. My name is April Hernandez, and I've worked at Starbucks for HMS Host for four years at Sky Harbor, Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport. Throughout the pandemic, me and my family have struggled paying bills, paying our rent. I've, they've cut my hours. My husband lost his job due to my son being in the hospital. So, it was, it was pretty hard. And honestly, I just, I just think that it's very unfair that HMS Host gets rent relief when, you know, other, their workers are struggling to pay their rent. So, I urge the Phoenix City Council to leave their workers and not give wealthy airport concessionaires any more relief. Enough is enough. Throughout the pandemic, the council voted three times to provide millions of dollars of relief to wealthy airport concessionaires, which results in corporations paying limited rent to the city of Phoenix for 16 months. Where is the relief for us workers? In my work environment, there's a lot of things that are broken, and I don't understand if HMS Host is getting all this rent relief, but yet, they can't afford to get us new ovens, new espresso machines, or just any other things that we need in our stores just to maintain like a good mental environment instead of, you know, customers constantly yelling at us and nagging at us, telling us, you know, like, oh, you should have told us this, you should have told us that. Like, I, very, it's very frustrating to get, you know, to be yelled at by customers and, you know, it's out of our power, that we can't really do much for them. But, thank you.
Our next speaker is Harley Jackson, followed by Vivian Lavely. Harley, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. My name is Harley, and I'm a resident of Phoenix at 85013. Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport placed fifth in the overall customer satisfaction index ranking down from the first place 2020, in part because of the food and beverage concessions program at the airport. Millions of workers have severely struggled in the midst of the pandemic, and I think it's imperative that workers receive the relief and support that we need during, and we need to turn our attention to providing help to them. Providing corporate welfare to these already incredibly wealthy airport companies does not aid the people and the workers of our community. I have friends who have been completely mistreated, who have worked at HMS Host and have been mistreated, and I'm urging you to please listen to these airport workers, and I unreservedly oppose this agenda item and urge council to vote no. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Vivian Lavely, followed by Katie Lavra. Vivian, are you on the line?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. You may proceed.
All right, great. Thank you so much for your time, Mayor, council members. Most of you know me, I'm Vivian, I've been working for Hosts for, going on nine years now. I cannot believe we are still having this conversation almost a year later at this point. I want to address some of the things that were said in regards to recall. You know, the last time we did this rent relief was with the agreement that us was going to, you know, extend recall rights, and that was, you know, with the understanding they would actually try to recall people. Since they have gotten a rent relief, we got a letter in the mail that we had to turn around and mail back to get our names on the list for recall, which was during November, absolutely the worst time of year, to try to get any form of mail out in a timely manner. So, we missed out on being on that list as a result of that. We've got text messages letting us know that, hey, your job isn't available yet, but go ahead and take this other job, which, yes, we were told that there wouldn't be any form of pickup, but that turned out not to be true either. I have a gentleman in my building who is making 70 cents an hour less than he was because he took a position at the airport and then transferred to the commissary, and he is still making that lower rate. I have no idea what the company is doing to try to fix that, if they've even acknowledged it at this point. I don't believe they have even acknowledged it. My husband, who was the lead, he was offered to come back as a cook, but because of the previous issues, we just can't trust any of this, that the company is telling us anymore because we had good faith set up from last rent relief that they were going to do things, and they have failed to do so, or did the, I apologize, you know, they did...
Our next speaker is Katie Lavra, followed by Anna Martinez. Katie, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You may proceed.
Okay, hello, council people, Mayor. My name is Katie Lavra, and I'm a resident of the city of Phoenix at zip code 85022. Sky Harbor Airport placed in the fifth place of the overall customer satisfaction index rating, down from the first place of 2020, in part because of the food and corporate concession programs at the airport. Now, what I feel is that the rent relief money would be better utilized in our community for small businesses and mompa companies. I believe that HMS Host, SSP, and others are being greedy and selfish. Let's bail out the backbone of Phoenix, the little companies, the mompop stores that keep us going on a day-to-day basis, not the billionaires. The billionaires can take care of themselves. And that, so I do oppose the agenda item 69, and I urge council to vote no, and I do thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Anna Martinez, followed by Michael Martinez. Anna, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
You may proceed.
Hi, Council. Good afternoon. My name is Anna Martinez. I am an organizer with Unite Here, represented workers at HMS Host, and I'm currently at SSP. And I can tell you that the workers are the ones that you should be listening to. I've helped hundreds of workers that have been furloughed, been recalled back. You know, HMS Host barely recalled the last of their workers, not even a couple months ago. It took them that whole time to recall their workers. I've seen the recall list for SSP, and I've still found a couple of people that just said they never got a call, they never got a notice. And I, I just don't know what else we can do to hold these companies accountable because it's simply not true. I've had workers, not only servers, but I had a worker call me not even a week, call us not even a week ago, saying that he was a cook, he asked to come back, he tried contacting SSP, never got a response. He even sent an application for multiple positions, cook positions, cashier, server, never got a response, all his applications got denied. So, how are you saying that you're trying so hard to staff your shop and to recall everybody when that's simply not true? Because I've seen it, and it's not true. You have a lot of people that are willing to come back, and even those that do come back, through the process of getting badge, through the process of having to reapply, they get hired and don't even start working until a month later. That just seems ridiculous to me, and it has real-life consequences. I've had workers that have gotten evicted because of this. I've had workers that have lost their cars, can't afford to pay food, can't afford to pay their healthcare, because these companies just, at the end of the day, don't care for the workers. So, I oppose this item. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Martinez, followed by Scott Matos Elliott. Michael, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. My name is Mike Martinez. I live in zip code 85007. And from my understanding, the Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport has kind of like had issues with the customer satisfaction, and that's caused our ranking to go from number one last year to number five. I think largely in part due to the understaffing issue, and I feel that that's kind of like the main point of why I oppose this. I feel like, number one, this is, these are corporations that are mistreating their workers, expecting them to work multiple job positions. But most importantly, this is a multi-billion dollar company, you know, that probably doesn't need this money, that is really being opportunistic about, you know, trying to get as much money as they can, because, you know, it's just out there. And, you know, I feel like, you know, most people are responsible, you know, with how they maintain their finances, and that these corporations should be the same way. And if they can't, you know, make ends meet, then, you know, that means that they're probably go out of business. That's the way it works in the real world. And so, you know, I'm just tired of people expecting free money when they haven't even really put in a good faith effort to, number one, rehire all the workers, and then, number two, I guess just, you know, to, you know, use their savings or whatever, their, whatever funds that they have to fall back on whenever they have, you know, financial issues.
Our next speaker is Scott Matos Elliott, followed by Maico Olivares. Scott, are you on the line?
Yep, I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Hello, my name is Scott Matos Elliott. I live in Phoenix, area code 85013. I work at Starbucks, there's a barista in terminal four at Sky Harbor, by the gate C1. Throughout this pandemic, it's been tough trying to like pay everything and pay bills. It's been a really stressful year. We all have our own personal issues with it. But I don't believe that HMS Host or SSP need any more of these monies, especially HMS Host. Like, through all these times that they have gotten relief, what have they done with it? They have not repaired anything. They have not given us any like major raises or done anything. And on top of that, they think they are, they're above like the rules. Like, I've had managers leave temporary badge employees alone for like, for hours without an escort being around. Our machines are all breaking down. Like, we can't even, like, anyone that has like tasted service coffee, they all know that it's something wrong with the machines. Like, I've had multiple customers complain about it because they're old, they don't make them no more, and HMS Host refused to order the new machines that Starbucks has issued that we all need. On top of that, they're not like keeping up with the federal mandates for the mask policies. They're completely ignoring it. And a few of, a few coworkers I've noticed have been targeted by racial surge or remarks. So, I honestly don't think HMS Host need any more money. They can, they can make it. They can make it on their own. What it really needs to go to is like housing and helping the people of the city, the small businesses. That is all.
Our next speaker is Maico Olivares, followed by Fabian Penna. Maico, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. I just want to echo what everybody else has already stated in that, you know, I don't believe that this, or any company in the airport deserves, I mean, the audacity to show up to the city council and ask for rent relief for a fourth time. Like, who do these guys think they are, Oliver Twist or something? But, you know, it's like, I hear over and over how we supposedly never have money, or we don't know how we're going to pay for certain things, yet this decision is being brought to the city council for the fourth time. Okay, now, I don't know if, you know, what we're playing here, but clearly, anybody who supports rent relief does not know what they are talking about, and that is all I have to say. So, I oppose this. Please vote no.
Our next speaker is Fabian Penna, followed by Laura Perez. Fabian, are you on the line? Fabian is not on the line. Our next speaker is Laura Perez, followed by Maria Placencia de Rios. Laura, are you on the line?
Hello. Yes, I am. Hello. My name is Laura Perez. I'm an organizer with Unite Here Local 11. I also work at a hotel in downtown Phoenix, and I live in District 4. I'm calling today to urge the council to listen to the workers. They have been speaking for a year and a half about working conditions at this airport under HMS Host and SSP. I, for myself, representing the workers for the past year, have seen how hard they work and how little this, these companies, how little respect they show these workers. I'm urging the council to not give these companies any more rent relief unless there is like real measures to hold them accountable to staffing levels as well as to what they've agreed to in past rent relief. There is still discrimination happening. I've spoken with new Host workers who, who formerly worked at SSP and have told me I haven't been recalled to SSP. I've applied to multiple jobs at SSP, and not once have they been contacted or followed up with. So, I think it's imperative that the council votes no on this agenda item unless there's real measures in place to make sure that the, these companies are held accountable and showing their workers the respect that they deserve. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Placencia de Rios, followed by Darnell Ramirez. Maria, are you on the line?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria, Maria Placencia de Rios.
Muy bien, Maria, gracias. Le voy a estar asistiendo con la interpretación. Nada más le voy a pedir que por favor, después de cada pocas oraciones, haga una breve pausa para poder interpretarle lo mejor posible. Adelante, Maria.
Okay. Buenas tardes, miembros del Consejo Municipal de Phoenix. Mi nombre es Maria Rios. Yo he trabajado para la compañía por diecisiete años.
Good afternoon, council members. I have been working for the company for the last 17 years.
Y estuve descansada por dieciocho meses durante la pandemia.
And I was for a long, 18 months during the pandemic.
Porque pues nos pararon a muchísima gente.
Because they let go of a lot of people.
El problema es que ahora nos llamaron a trabajar a unas seis personas y trabajamos.
And the problem is that they called six of us to go back to work, and we went to work.
Pero la condición era trabajar dentro del cooler.
But the condition was to work under the cooler.
Y el problema es que estamos trabajando, yo no sé si porque no tiene dinero la compañía, como dicen, o no sé qué pasa, no tenemos quien limpie los baños y tenemos que estar entrando a unos baños sucios y malolientes.
And I don't know what the problem is. I don't know if the company's having issues, can't afford certain things, but we have to use restrooms that are dirty and smell really bad.
Y yo pienso que ya es suficiente, suficiente ayuda para la compañía puesto que ellos no les interesan los empleados, solo su bienestar.
And I think it's enough. It's enough to continue to help the company because at the end of the day, they don't care about their employees.
Necesitamos que la ciudad nos escuche a los empleados porque ya es mucho la ayuda que han dado a la compañía.
What we need is for the city to listen to the employees because you... What we need is for the city to listen to the employees because you've already given a lot of money to the company.
Millones y millones han recibido de alivio por la pandemia, pero qué tiene el empleado de tantos millones, ni siquiera el trabajo justo, ni siquiera un trato digno. Por ejemplo...
The millions of millions of relief monies that they've received because of the pandemic, they have nothing to show for in their employees. They don't even treat their employees correctly.
Por ejemplo, yo estuve descansada por dieciocho meses y yo estaba en medio de un tratamiento de cáncer.
For example, when I was for a load for eighteen months, I was in a treatment due to cancer.
Para mí quedar sin aseguranza médica porque no tenía...
And because, and I didn't have insurance, medical insurance, because of that.
Necesitamos, por favor, que la ciudad nos escuche a los trabajadores porque están apoyando a las concesiones del aeropuerto y no está bien.
We need for the city to listen to the employees and not help the concessions.
Our next speaker is Darnell Ramirez.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Guardado, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just had a question for Maria.
¿Una pregunta?
Maria, buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Una pregunta para usted. Usted recibió una carta de terminación de HMS Hosts?
No, solamente nos dieron un papel para alam empleo. Fue todo. Nos dieron papel para que fuéramos a colectar, y yo fui y pregunté a Yuri directamente cuánto tiempo vamos a estar fuera, y la señora me contestó, "I don't know, I don't know, I don't know." Fue todo.
So what council member was asking is if they received some kind of notification when they were for a load, and Maria stated that they only got an unemployment, a letter to collect unemployment. She went to Yuri directly, and she told, asked her, "How much time is this going to go for?" And she said she couldn't answer that. Couldn't tell her. She didn't know.
Okay, yes, yes.
Solamente una pequeña cosa. Ellos dijeron que si yo no regresaba, me daban por terminada en mi trabajo. Es todo. Gracias.
And one last thing. They told me that if I didn't come back, that I could be, that I could be considered terminated.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. ¿Todavía está con nosotros, señora?
Sí, estoy toda. Sí.
Okay. Tengo unas cuantas preguntas para usted. Buenas tardes. La primera pregunta es que mencionó que cuando volvió al trabajo, volvió bajo el cooler, and lo que quiero que me expliques es si volvió a un trabajo diferente de lo que hacía antes, or volvió a lo mismo que estaba haciendo antes. My question is, earlier she mentioned, let me transcribe, earlier she mentioned that she worked in the cooler, and I want to know if when she came back, she came to a different job or the same job she was doing before.
El trabajo es el mismo, pero la condición que pusieron para regresarnos al trabajo era trabajar dentro del área del cooler. Y antes no trabajábamos en el cooler. Trabajábamos fuera, del cooler.
So, trabaja, trabajaba, entonces tienen, tienen mismo trabajo que tenía anteriormente?
Hacemos lo mismo, pero solo con la condición de hacerlo dentro del cooler, en área del cooler.
So she's doing the same job that she's done before. The only difference was that the condition was for her to do her job under the cooler.
And the other question I have for you is, if now that they've moved, they're given the full hours? I mean, they're giving forty hours a week, and it's consistent? And if you know, if you know of other workers, it might be different.
Al principio, las primeras semanas, nos daban treinta y tres, treinta y tres horas, treinta horas, y yo hablé con la Unión y yo le dije, "Por qué no nos están dando full time?" Entonces, lo que hicieron fue llevar unos sandwiches para que le pongamos el label y darnos un poco más de trabajo, porque no nos estaban dando las cuarenta horas al regresar.
So when they first started, they went back, they only gave him thirty-three hours a week. She went back to ask why wouldn't they give them more hours. So they turned around and just sent them sandwiches and told them that they were going to give them more hours eventually.
Gracias, señora.
Muchas gracias a usted.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Darnell Ramirez, followed by Lupe Rincon. Darnell, are you on the line?
I'm on the line. I was commenting the whole time on Maria's case. What would you like to know about my case? How should I start it?
If you could just speak to whether, how, whether the council should approve the agenda item.
Okay. So I worked for SSP until last March, when I was for a load. It would have been, at that time, like, close to four and a half years. I just recently went back, October 9th. I had to get a job October 2nd. I had a slew of medical issues that I still go through today. I lost seven members of my family since last October to January. How things are inappropriate with SSP is that, aside from them getting the rental assistance, they actually hired me back a few months ago. I don't have the correct dates in front of me, but they hired me back. I said I was ready to go back, and then I ha-
Our next speaker is Lupe Rincon, followed by Lucia Salinas. Lupe, are you on the line? Lupe is not on the line. Our next speaker is Lucia Salinas, followed by Mike Schaeferly. Lucia, are you on the line? Lucia is not on the line. Our next speaker is Mike Schaeferly, followed by Victoria Stahl. Mike, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
We can hear you, and you may proceed.
Hello. My name is Mike Schaeferly. I worked at, with HMS Hosts at the commissary, and when I first came, when the pandemic first started, I was like one of the last ones laid off in March of that year, and I was laid off until November. And I came back, they said that I couldn't go back to the commissary where I was at. I'd have to go work at the airport first. So I worked for the airport for the year, and I just recently got back to the commissary. And at the commissary, there's like, only like nine of us that are working over there. We're doing the work of, wait, you sound like pre-pandemic, of a hundred and fifty people doing all the, all the menu items for the restaurants. And every day, at the commissary, we're being, they're coming out telling us, like, we've got to get new items put on the, on the menu, but they're not doing anything to get people in there to help us out. And it's getting a little, really ridiculous that they can't get people in to help, and we're getting shorthanded. I'm getting, sometimes I get stressed out thinking that, when I come in, knowing that there's going to be a long list for me to do that day. And if I don't get it done, it's pretty much that it's gonna, it's gonna have, they're gonna complain about it, and it's still gonna have to be done the next day to get to them. So I don't think that they deserve this money if they're not gonna do anything to help the workers to get back, to get back to work, and so that we can quit having to do the work of three to four people over there. And so I think you should say no, vote no on this agenda. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Victoria Stahl, followed by Beatrice Topete. Victoria, are you on the line?
The Phoenix City Council. My name is, good evening, members of the Phoenix City Council. My name is Victoria Stahl. I work for HMS Hosts as a barista, and I've worked there for about nine months. My home location, my home store, is actually currently one of the fourth stores that HMS has closed. I have not heard anything about it. It's reopening as of yet. I have been burned by broken machines before in our stores. I've had faced lines of thirty angry people. I have faced horrible supply shortages. Last night, for example, I had to throw out six jugs of curdled heavy cream. I am tired of dealing with this. It is a daily, a weekly, and it's been a monthly thing for the last year and a half. Badging can take upwards of five hours, none of which my company pays for. The people who have spoken so far today in favor of this, as Stahl put it, a corporate bailout, have said it's a win-win, have said it's vital to ongoing operations. You know who's vital to ongoing operations? Us workers. You know who's not winning in this right now? The workers. We make Sky Harbor America's friendliest airport. We make tens of thousands of dollars a day for the same companies who are on this call today, who are here asking you for more relief money for a fourth time. And I will tell you, I can promise you, none of that is going to get passed on to the workers. You know, they talked about two hundred dollar bonuses. They didn't mention that it was only a four-month thing. We got four checks, all of which were taxed. They say they're having trouble hiring workers, but they're not raising wages. You know, there are days where I do the work of two to three people because there are not enough people that are being hired. And it's not because they can't, it's because it's more convenient for them not to hire them. I am a stakeholder of this airport too, and my coworkers and I are tired of being put on the sidelines. We are tired of being ignored and not heard. That's why I'm here today to tell you there needs to be some kind of accountability for these companies. There needs to be some kind of stipulations put in place, or you need to vote no on giving them this money. They don't deserve it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beatrice Topete, followed by Mateo Vargas. Beatrice, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Hello? Okay, thank you. My name is Beatrice Topete, and I'm calling on behalf of United Here Local 11 and the thousands of workers at Sky Harbor that we represent to ask that you listen to airport workers and only, and I repeat, only vote for additional relief for airport concessionaires if the relief is conditional on the company's being open and staffed at close to pre-pandemic levels. Enough is enough. This is good for the city, and this is good for workers. If the city wants the airport to provide excellent service, it needs to listen to the people like us doing the actual work of serving its guests. We have witnessed a rapid increase in passengers. The workers have witnessed this. In July of this year, our airport saw a hundred percent of the employed passengers when compared to July 2019. Yet businesses has, yet while businesses has returned as of July 2021, nine of the locations of their SSP's Terminal 4 lease remain closed. Throughout the pandemic, the council voted three times to provide millions of dollars of relief to wealthy airport concessionaires, which resulted in these corporations paying limited rents to the city of Phoenix for sixteen months. Workers not, never got that kind of break. You've heard several workers talking about all their bills being evicted, and this, but continuously reducing and waiving the minimum annual guarantee is exactly what amounts to wealthy corporations. HMS Hosts alone saved 4.4 million on their rent to the city between April 2020 and July 2021. In July 2021, HMS Hosts not only recovered all of their sales, but grew them by 4% when compared to 2019, pre-pandemic. So I asked, how, like, if they're making pre-pandemic sales with less of the staff, how do they need rent relief? You've heard the workers that their equipment has broken. And last thing, HMS Hosts is subsidiary of...
Our next speaker is Mateo Vargas, followed by Mari Yapes. Mateo, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Hi, my name is Mateo Vargas. I am a Starbucks barista in Terminal 3 with HMS Hosts. I worked at this company for going on four months now, and it's been such a struggle. I, since the beginning of this pandemic, I've struggled to pay my rent, I've struggled supporting me and my spouse. Meanwhile, HMS Hosts has had millions of dollars of rent relief, and we, us workers, have seen none of it. Our machines are broken, our, we are understaffed, we are operating stores in skeleton crews, our registers are constantly crashing. An espresso machine burned me and threw steam at me today after it broke because it hadn't had maintenance performed on it in six months. HMS Hosts does not care about their workers. They go out of their way to abuse their workers. It's an absolute horrible treatment. I've heard council members speak to HMS Hosts and SSP's representatives. I'm putting it out there, I am available as a resource if you want to speak to me on what it is like to be a worker at HMS Hosts. Everything that HMS Hosts and SSP's HR departments and representatives have said have been lies. They do not care about their workers. They do not care about any of us. They, all they care about is their profit, and we don't see any of this rent relief. Thank you for your time.
Our last speaker is Mari Yapes. Mari, are you on the line?
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Good evening, members of the Phoenix State Council. My name is Mari Yapes, and I am a union representative with United Here Local 11 at Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport, and I am here urging the city council that, to vote no on the rent relief unless there's real strong accountability with these concessionaires like HMS Hosts and SSP. You've heard for months and months from workers giving testimony and public comment about the working conditions, about what they're experiencing, about the understaffing. You know that in September 15th, workers went on strike because of the understaffing, and yet they are not getting any relief, yet the companies are getting all of this money despite being back at pre-pandemic levels in sales. So I really urge the council today to oppose this agenda item and vote no unless there's real accountability. Thank you.
Thank you all for your testimony. I'll turn to Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, mayor. So two comments before a motion. So thank you to everyone who spoke on this item today, but when it comes to Sky Harbor Airport, I believe our core responsibility is to ensure a healthy ecosystem for our travelers, businesses, and everyone that does work at the airport. I know I have been working with Councilwoman Pastor, Vice Mayor Garcia, our concessionaires, and Aviation Department to set up COVID testing and vaccine pods at the airport since the summer. In addition, our Aviation Department has been working diligently to provide more ch-... In addition, our Aviation Department has been working diligently to provide more childcare options. Our council has provided two rounds of rent relief, and we allocated additional funds specifically for our small businesses. However, our customer satisfaction is falling behind, like some people have said. Like one of our callers mentioned, when you look at the 2021 J.D. Power Airport Satisfaction Study, we dropped from the first place in 2020 to fifth place in 2021. The study reflects that labor shortages within food, food and beverage and retail played a key role in how airports were ranked. Our Aviation Department also tracks customer complaints, and we have seen a growing concern from the traveling public on lack of availability, reduced business hours, and overall customer satisfaction when it comes to our dining experience at the airport. With that, I believe it is our responsibility as council members to ensure our contractors are following through on their commitments to best serve all the passengers coming through our airport. We pride ourselves as a world-class airport, and we have a responsibility to our taxpayers and customers to ensure service lives up to the standards they expect. The number of people using the airport is close to pre-pandemic levels, which is amazing news for our top economic engine, engine in our city. Unfortunately, our operations have not kept up, and our passengers are noticing. Some of our restaurants remain closed, many are seeing continually long lines and wait times due to lack of staffing. We are seeing limited menu options, and our workforce struggles to keep up. I am very supportive of, of, of all of our small businesses that are partnering with the city to find solutions and are striving to restore full service. But I also believe with the funding be, being provided by our taxpayers, we need to include accountability measures. I want to stress that I continue to hear from individuals that is free money, it is not. We need to be accountable and goal-oriented. I believe the focus should remain on serving our customers' needs. The only way I can support moving forward this item is to go back to the original stipulations that we proposed by staff in September. And with that, I would, I would like to move forward approval of item 69, but only with the original stipulations that were previously recommended by staff in the September 15, 2021 City Council Report, which included the following stipulations. Concessionaires must be operating to receive relief. Concessionaires must have staffed to at least 80% staffing of 2019 levels within 90 days of accepting the relief. Concessionaires must operate at 100% of their contractual hours within 90 days of City Council approval. And concessionaires must return to full menu offerings as compared to 2019 within 90 days of accepting relief. Finally, if FAA responds that any of these stipulations do not meet the requirements, that, that this item is to be brought, brought back to City Council for additional discussions and considerations.
Second. Second.
Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and I, um, Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to applaud Councilwoman Gordado for putting those things in there. And those are logical business discussions and, and moves that anybody in the private sector would do. If you're going to open, I mean, if you're gonna have a contract with somebody, you've gotta open up, and that's as simple as that. And it's, it's a lot more hardcore other than dealing with government. Government's always giving you a pass, and these companies, these large companies have had a pass for, or here now, and received, I think, well over $30 million in rent relief when the general public has received virtually nothing at the same time. So from my end, I think you just give them a certain amount of time to open up, and if they don't, you call them and breach of contract, and then kick them out. It's as simple as that. This whole BS about not being able to get workers is because they're not doing the things that the workers need them to do. They're in a competitive work environment, and they have to go out there and compete for those workers. It's as simple as that. They're just not wanting to do that, or even willing to do that because it hurts their bottom line. And you know why? Because they get money from us. They are, we are funding their inefficiency over there, and they're, and the fact that they're not paying their workers enough to be able to compete in the marketplace. It's as simple as that. I wouldn't, I would support those requirements that Mrs. Gordado put on the table, Councilwoman Gordado did that, but I'm not gonna give them any more money. I'm not voting for a penny more for these clowns. They're multi-billion dollar international companies looking for rent relief in a marketplace right now that nobody's getting that. So if you wanna put those requirements on separate to the, from the rent relief, I'd be happy for, to vote for this, but I'm not gonna give these clowns a dime, or not even a penny. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman DeCecio. Additional council member comments. Councilwoman Pastor, followed by Councilwoman Ansari.
Um, Councilwoman Gordado, could you read the stipulations once again?
Sure. Concessionaires must be operating to receive relief. Concessionaires must staff at least 80% staffing of 2019 levels within 90 days of accepting relief. Concessionaires must operate at 100% of their contractual hours within 90 days of City Council approval. And concessionaires must return to full menu offerings as compared to 2019 within 90 days of accepting relief. Finally, if the FAA responds that any of these stipulations do not meet their requirements, that this item be brought back to City Council for additional discussions and considerations.
Okay. Um, the reason why I was asking you to read them again was because, um, what I really, what I really want to know is I keep hearing, or I've heard, this, this, uh, these dollars will help us, these dollars will, um, uh, keep us open. Uh, my question, and I don't know who it goes to, uh, is in receiving these dollars, what is the plan? And I don't know if it goes into a stipulation, to provide us a, a plan to bring workers back to the 80%? So I don't know if that goes to staff or who that goes to.
Mayor, uh, Councilwoman Pastor, this is Chad Makovsky, Director of Aviation Services. So according to the stipulations, um, the concessionaires would not be eligible for the funding if they did not staff to at least 80% of 2019 levels within 90 days of accepting relief. So we would be, uh, as a condition of entering into the agreement with the concessionaires, asking them for a plan to get into compliance with that within 90 days of accepting relief, at which point if they aren't in compliance with that stipulation, we would cease, um, the dispersment of any relief to that concessionaire until they come back into compliance.
Okay. I have a follow-up question of what you said. You had said they would, we would not, uh, release any dispersment if they're not in compliance. What dispersment are you doing before compliance?
And thank you, uh, Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor. So the, this particular stipulation says that they must staff to at least 80% of 2019 within 90 days of accepting the relief. And so from that first dispersment, they would have up to 90 days, according to the stipulation, to get to that 80% staffing level. Uh, so what we would be dispersing, according to the proposal, is, um, monthly rent relief per their allocation that they would get from the Federal Aviation Administration. So they would get rent relief for that first 90 days, providing, of course, that all, they met all the conditions, all the remaining stipulations that Councilwoman Gordado spelled out in her motion.
Okay, so I just wanna be clear. We're gonna provide them 90 days of rent relief, uh, beforehand or before any of the stipulations come into play?
Mayor to Councilwoman Pastor, if they met all of the other stipulations, with the exception of the one that, um, you're referring to, the 80% staffing, they would be eligible for rent relief for a period of 90 days, at which point we would verify that they meet that, that 80% requirement. That's how that stipulation is written.
Okay. That's what I'm, I'm trying to understand that because if, in my mind, if it's not, if they don't meet these stipulations, are they only supposed to meet one, or are they supposed to meet all four of them?
Mayor to Councilwoman Pastor, they would need to meet all stipulations in order to be eligible to receive the relief.
Okay. So if they don't meet one of those stipulations after 90 days, are they repaying the airport, or are they giving the 90-day, uh, rent relief back?
Mayor to Councilwoman Pastor, uh, no, they would not be, uh, required to return that rent relief to the airport at that point in time. Uh, we would put them on pause until they returned into compliance with the stipulation, at which point staff would propose to continue providing relief until that relief is exhausted.
Okay, I'm gonna sit on that while somebody else speaks.
Wonderful. We'll go to Councilwoman Ansari. Uh, let's go to Councilwoman Ansari, and then we'll go back to Councilman DeCecio.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, just wanted to kind of echo some of the things that we heard by the callers today. I think we all know that the pandemic was tough on our airport concessionaires, but as well on the hard-working folks who pride themselves in excellent service for our customers and to keep America's friendliest airport running. Um, I personally had the opportunity to visit the airport a while back to better understand the frustrations on both sides, and concerns over hiring practices and retention rates have been brought to our attention on many occasions. I think this is why I really believe that the proposed stipulations, um, in this motion will help us reach outcomes that are in the best interest of all, whether that's our workers, our customers, and our businesses. I really hope that improving staffing levels and opening up restaurant concepts, going back to full menus at the airport, will help improve the current conditions. It's been especially concerning to hear about understaffing and the negative impact that this has had on our workers. We've heard from folks calling in for, for months now. Um, but equally important is how this affects customer experience at our airport. Um, if you've taken any time to look at Yelp reviews of the airport lately, they have not been good. Um, so we need to be doing whatever we can to get back to our former status as one of the country's best airports when it comes to customer service. Um, we also know that rent is often the biggest expense for any business, um, and to this date, Phoenix has issued more than $20 million in rent relief to small and large concessionaires. And now that we're finally seeing pre-pandemic numbers in terms of business and travel, I hope that we can see additional focus on improving working conditions and offering incentives to hard-working families in order to build a sustainable workforce. Um, the callers here have asked for more transparency and input in making that happen, so hopefully in future meetings and stakeholder meetings, we can, you know, get more input from our, on-the-ground employees, but I'm, uh, looking forward to supporting this motion today. And also just wanna thank, um, Chad for, I know this has not been an easy process and all of the work that you've done, um, in the backs and forth to get us here and to make sure that you hear from folks is, is very much appreciated from my end. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor. And Chad, you did, you've done an excellent job there as the new airport director. I mean, we're very lucky to have you there. So none of this is a reflection on you at all. It's just, you know, a tiring of having to hand out millions of dollars to these large companies. It's corporate welfare thing. It just really grates on me, as you can tell. I'm not very happy about it, right? So, but, you know, from my end of it, going back to it, I would just give them a notice and say, you've got X amount of time to open up. If you don't open up, you're in default, and it's time for you to go somewhere else. And then get another user in here, which we will not have any problems filling at all. You'll find someone more accommodating, that's for sure. But going back to Councilwoman Pastor's question there about what happens with that 90 days, I thought that was one of the best things that's come out of this discussion. And this is just a question and a thought, since I'm not voting for this thing, because there's just no way I'm gonna give these guys anything. But you might want to, Councilwoman Gordado, say that in your motion, you may wanna say that if they don't fulfill those items in the contract or the, uh, the agreement, all of them, all four of those, then they have to repay it. That's what I would do. I mean, if you're gonna try to get them to hold firm to this, because then they're gonna come back again and again and again. We've seen this story, and everybody just keeps giving them what they want. And there's a time, you have to kind of just say enough. And so I think if you were to put in a requirement in there that says that, you know, if they don't fulfill these terms, regardless of what the F, you know, FFA, or FAA comes back with, they have to return the money and deal with it that way. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilwoman Pastor, and then Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Chad, I would think about, uh, those wanting to receive the money in the first 90 days, that they submit a business plan and a true business plan or a true recruitment plan on how they are going to recruit workers and, uh, at least put some benchmarks or outcomes or metrics on that. It just, it just troubles me. I don't even know how to, how to, how to say this in my head, because I always say, um, in business, uh, I feel like if they don't reach their goal and they receive a reward for not reaching the goal, um, and I don't know if the reward is, is, is the rent relief. I don't know if we would equate that to that, but, um, then I would go receive the money 90 days, I would try to put my plan into play. If I didn't do it, then I go back to the way I, there's no real true, um, incentive for them to get workers and get it open. We, we, we've already given, we've given relief. So now it's time where we need to start moving. So I don't know.
Mayor to Councilwoman Pastor, appreciate that feedback, and it, it may be helpful to note that, um, the concessionaires as one, one of the stipulations is the concessionaires must operate 100% of their contractual hours within 90 days of council approval, which is today, theoretically today, if the council does approve it. It's going to take us a period of time to formally apply with the Federal Aviation Administration to run our implementation plan through, uh, the FAA process, get their review and approval. And it's very possible that this relief would not even be available until 90 days after today. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll just have to work with the FAA to ultimately determine when that dispersment of funding would come to the airport and be available then to the concessionaires.
Okay, can I have a follow-up, Mayor, and then I'll let Vice Mayor? Sorry, guys. Um, so then maybe within these 90 days, they provide a plan. And I don't know if we need to stip it. I don't. That's a, that's, I'm asking staff that that's what, how do you hold them accountable, I guess, is what I'm asking, other than those stips within, after 90 days?
Mayor to Councilwoman Pastor, so no, none of that money would, uh, pass hands into the concessionaires until they meet all the stipulations, with the exception of the 80% staffing. Uh, what I am suggesting is that by the time we reach out to the FAA, uh, get their approval, I expect it will be 60 to 90 days before that funding would be available for us to disperse to concessionaires anyway. I completely agree with your suggestion, though, uh, that we should, in the interim, work with our concessionaires, uh, to develop a business recovery plan that will ultimately get them to meet those stipulations.
Okay. I just, I'm hoping that it's not like it was in the past when we were asking for certain things, and some, some of the, some of the concessionaires did it, some of the concessionaires didn't, and there wasn't, uh, I guess, not necessarily accountability, but I don't know how they, how people pick and choose to do certain things in the sense of when the airport is asking. Um, so I will go on the leap of faith, I will trust, uh, that these concessionaires, from the small businesses to the primes, uh, will, uh, work with you, and you will work with their staff on developing a business plan, uh, or, or business, or recruitment model, I don't know what you wanna call it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll go to the Vice Mayor and then Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. And first, I want to thank all the workers who, who called in. I think hearing today that it's not going to an ordinary job. They have to go through a lot of obstacles to get, literally, to get to the job, from parking and transportation. to get, literally, to get to the job from parking and transportation. And so I want to thank them. And I really, you know, hearing those, those concerns of folks having to do different jobs than they were doing before, or having to do the job of two or three people, I really think these stipulations are excellent to try to make sure that folks are, that the businesses are fully staffed, and that the employees who already have done so much, someone who've worked through the pandemic, someone who were home, maybe on unemployment or didn't have a job for a while, and were willing to come back, shouldn't be expected to, to work more than they have to or they had before. And I think that the wages piece, I think, is important, and some of South's points about the primes or the folks asking for these funds, take into account that, that those wages do need to, to be higher, and that folks need to be treated differently. I want to support this. I understand that there's primes, there's small businesses, there's different folks that this impacts. But I really hope that there's accountability measures like Councilwoman Pastor asked for. But I did, Chad, want to, want to reiterate or remind you of the concerns of the badging. That sounds like, you know, even extra barriers for both people to get hired, but also for workers to have to go through these hoops to, to, to get to work. And so I know it's nothing to do with the stipulation. I'll be supporting Councilwoman Guardado's motion. But I did want to just mark or ask a question of what can we do to make sure that the badging process, at least from our end, isn't being held up, and folks have a better way of getting that done.
Mayor to the Vice Mayor, that's a great question, and I appreciate the opportunity to address that. As you might imagine, the security of Sky Harbor Airport is one of the things I think about almost every minute of every day. And it's one of the most important things that our, our staff does, is do the suitability vetting of prospective employees to make sure that they are able to provide, are able to get access to the highly secured areas of the airport, and they also have access to specific items that aren't allowed to be on aircraft as a part of the job duties that they have. So it is an important process. I absolutely agree. Our badging office, much like even the travel and hospitality industry as a whole, has felt some of the impacts associated with the pandemic, and that's resulted in some workforce challenges for us. We're working very hard with our supervisors and others to provide great customer service to these concessionaires, understanding the, the challenges that they're facing with attracting and retaining employees. So we're working very hard. In fact, my staff told me that we'll be accepting walk-ups, again, effective today, and that information is going out to concessionaires, which I think is going to help in that process. We also issue temporary badges to employees who are going through the process. So while we're waiting for the federal government to review the, the security checks and the security threat assessments and get that information back to us, we are able to allow employees in certain circumstances to have badges under escort in these areas, so they can start their jobs while they're waiting for the results to come back. We also provide a number of other tools, for example, Procter training, so they can go through their security training process more quickly and efficiently through a Procter program. So all of those things are helpful, but we will continue to work hard to do more to reduce those barriers.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Chad, you just talked about applying for these funds. And can you tell us a little bit more about where these funds are coming from?
Mayor to Councilwoman O'Brien, yes, the funding is coming, it was allocated through Congress through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. There are specific allocation of approximately $19 million. That's been specifically allocated by Congress to be administered through the FAA to Sky Harbor Airport and ultimately to our concessionaires, the in-terminal concessionaires. So it was allocated and approved and provisioned by Congress through the Federal Aviation Administration, and then the airport is, is going to administer it in the form of rent credits.
And some of the callers talked about previous rent credits that our concessionaires received. Are they still receiving rent, rent concessions right now?
Mayor to Councilwoman O'Brien, they are not receiving any additional rent credits or MEG relief or minimum annual guarantee relief. We reinstituted the minimum annual guarantee payment effective August of 2021.
And do you know roughly how much rent relief was issued?
Mayor to Councilwoman O'Brien, the airport's provided approximately $19.8 million in rent relief to the concessionaires since the beginning of the pandemic through the council's authorization. And through that time, the airport's been able to reimburse itself by about $4.8 million through the CARISA grant, which was the second form of grant relief funding administered by Congress.
Okay. Continue on. And during, from the beginning of the pandemic, roughly March of 2020, correct, through August of 2021, what did airport travel look like at Phoenix Sky Harbor?
And Mayor to Councilwoman O'Brien, we experienced in March of 2020, well in excess of a 90% drop in traffic within a couple of weeks, over a period of a couple of weeks, as the pandemic hit and very much affected the, the traffic at the airport. That traffic slowly recovered late in 2020 through the holiday season, going into 2021, to, I would say, roughly 50 and 60% of, of what we would experience in, in the same period in 2019 or pre-pandemic. And then effective in roughly the spring break time, March of 2021, we saw a dramatic increase in passenger traffic at Sky Harbor Airport, up to which we, we've seen now for the last three or four months, well in excess of 90% of pre-pandemic traffic levels coming through the airport.
Okay, so earlier today, received a report, or heard about a report where it shows that back in June of this year, we were still under about, we were down, I would guess, about 22.9%, roughly, that's what the report suggests from the prior years. Does that sound about right?
Mayor to Councilwoman O'Brien, I believe that is accurate. July came in at 99.3% of pre-pandemic passenger levels, and then August and September have both been in the 90, 93, and then subsequently 95%.
Okay, so about July, August is when it took that uptick. So it wouldn't surprise you if I told you that one of our vendors said that in, in April of 2020, I'm going to back up, in, in February of 2020, their revenues were roughly 6.3 million, and in April of 2020, they were at 476,000 in revenue. Would that surprise you?
Councilwoman O'Brien, no, that's, that would be accurate, from what I can see.
Okay. And I'm going to go back to these, this, the grant you are asking for approval for us to apply to, for, can these dollars be used for anything else except for our small business concessions and large business concessions at Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport?
Councilwoman O'Brien, no, they cannot. They are very specifically allocated to in-terminal concessionaires at airports across the country.
And has anybody in your department received any communication from the FAA regarding the stipulations that Councilwoman Guardado put forth today?
Councilwoman O'Brien, we did not submit a request for the FAA to review the first round of stipulations that Councilwoman Guardado has proposed today. So those have yet to, to, to be reviewed by the FAA. They would be as a part of the implementation plan. But we did submit the proposed staff's recommendation in today's briefing to the FAA for a pre-review, understanding the importance of this item to the council. They have responded and provided some initial feedback. They have not given us a final opinion. In that initial feedback, they did raise some questions related to the proportionality and equitable, the equitability of the distribution of the relief across all the concessionaires. And so we won't really ultimately know the answers to the questions they've raised until we formally apply.
And are some of the concerns discussed today by the callers, as well as my fellow council members, would they be related to our contracts that we have with our concessionaires?
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilwoman O'Brien, could you say that again, please?
So the, some of the concerns raised by workers related to, you know, being open, and my, and fellow councilmembers, being open, serving the food, the hours, the service, customer service, would those be more questions about the contract we actually have with our concessionaires?
Councilwoman O'Brien, if I, if I understand your, your question correctly, early on in the pandemic, the Federal Aviation Administration provided guidance to the industry, to airports, to be careful about taking action on contracts with concessionaires, given the dramatic impact that the pandemic has had on the industry. And so they, in fact, asked that the industry reach out to them if we were considering enforcing terms of the contract, or more specifically terminating any contracts as a lack of non-compliance due to the extraordinary events of the pandemic. So we, we have given all concessionaires across the board latitude as it relates to the provisions in the contract because of the effects of the pandemic.
Okay. And you said you did submit the stipulations that were recommended by staff in today's agenda for just kind of a heads up to the FAA, and they did say, you said they had some concerns. Would you say that the stipulations that Councilwoman Guardado moved to approve instead, are they more stringent or less stringent than the staff-recommended ones?
Mayor to Councilwoman O'Brien, I, I think the difference that I would characterize between the two is because they are including the menu offerings, there are additional stipulations above and beyond what staff is recommending today. And I would suggest the only other difference is in what staff is recommending. The, the concessionaires preferred that approach in, in the outreach that we did with them, and they cited the reason they preferred it is because they would be able to get, even if it's a portion of the relief, they would be able to get some immediate relief funding as opposed to it being deferred until they met the criteria in Councilwoman Guardado's motion today.
Okay, so, but the stipulate, one of the stipulations you all recommended meant that, suggested that they would get some relief based on the level of staffing. So if they were at 60% staffing, they could receive 60% relief. The current motion on the table basically says without 80% staffing within 90 days, or, and, and then additional staffing within 100 days. Am I reading that? No. 80, it's the staffing. So it's an increase in staffing.
Yeah, an increase in staffing. There's also a stipulation saying that the stores must be open 100% of their contractual hours, and then the menu offerings. So all of those would be different from what staff was recommending today.
Okay, thank you so much. Chad, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman O'Brien. Councilwoman Pastor.
Chad, can I ask why there were original stipulations that were submitted in September? And we were ready to go up for a vote on that. Can I ask why we did not take a vote on those stipulations?
Mayor to Councilwoman Pastor, staff did receive, a couple of days prior to the council meeting, feedback from the industry that they had some concerns about the stipulations, and they felt that staff could have done a better job of doing outreach. So out of an abundance of caution, we elected to request withdrawal of the item so we could do additional outreach with the industry.
Okay. And so you did some additional outreach with the industry and came back with different stipulations for a meeting, I would say, October. And then what happened at that moment? We were to go to take a vote, and it was postponed.
Councilwoman Pastor, that is correct. We brought the item back with the revised recommended stipulations. I believe it was the October 6th formal agenda, if I'm not mistaken. And then, leading up to that, as we were doing briefings, we again received feedback that folks would like more time to give this careful consideration. So we requested a continuance of the item to today's session.
Okay. So my question is, since we hadn't voted on it, why did we send stipulations to FAA if we hadn't voted on it? Because there was one or two, there were two different options. And so my question is, why didn't we do that?
Mayor to Councilwoman Pastor, customarily, we would not, an airport would not pre-vet these items with the FAA. That would have been done as a part of the application process, where we would review our implementation plan with them. In this instance, given the interest from the concessionaires and other stakeholders involved, we felt out of an abundance of caution, it would be appropriate to do a preview with the FAA, ultimately to make sure that what we were recommending to the council would be something that could be supported potentially by the FAA.
So why didn't you send both stipulations, like an option one, option two?
Mayor to Councilwoman Pastor, I, I will take the responsibility for that. Based, based on the, the stakeholder feedback we received, we felt it was appropriate, as a staff recommendation, to take staff's recommendation to the FAA as opposed to offering them two options. And, and I take responsibility for not submitting the first round of stipulations to them.
Yeah, I mean, you mean, I, I'm just saying, we might as well be consistent and equitable in how we, how we handle these things, because it's now created a spiral, and it's created a, a number of things, created an article in the paper, and it's, it's not necessary. And so I feel like that we're in the situation that we're in at this moment, when there, those stipulations were the original stipulations. And industry is creating havoc right now, because they don't like this, they don't like the first stipulations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any additional council comments? All right, we will go to roll call on Councilwoman Guardado's motion.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
DeCiccio.
No.
Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
I'd like to explain my vote.
Please do. Please go ahead.
Thank you. So I can't stress enough the importance of ensuring our small businesses receive these federal funds as quickly as possible. These funds are granted to us by the FAA through the ARPA bill. They're not our dollars to stipulate and make unreasonable demands of our concessionaires, contrary to the belief of some that we've heard from today. I will be voting no on this measure, because I don't believe these funds are the cities to determine how to distribute. The FAA has sent a notice to the Aviation Department saying as much. These stipulations put too much stress on our small businesses, already finding it difficult to succeed. I believe that claims that our concessionaires are purposefully understaffing their concepts and not hiring adequate staff is just, is not born to be true, given the testimony we've heard. All over the country, we are seeing store after store place now hiring signs in their front windows. We heard from one concessionaire today, at almost 81% of their scheduled interviews didn't show up. Another concessionaire stated 60% of individuals who were hired turned them down or are no longer working for them. I don't know how we can demand our airport small businesses staff at a certain level in order to obtain the relief the federal government is giving when people simply aren't showing up to their interviews or accepting job offers. And then when someone does get hired, our own staffing issues at the city have prevented the employee from starting as soon as possible. And in some cases, those folks are going out and finding other gainful employment. We're having staffing issues in all kinds of sectors, in the education sector, in the trucking sector. This is not a, just this business. At the end of the day, this isn't our money to dictate how it is dispersed. These are federal dollars that are specifically slotted for the Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport. So I think that if we apply for them, we should So I think that if we apply for them, we should disperse them as the FAA dictates it. So having said that, I vote no.
Pastor.
I'm a yes vote, and I will explain my vote. My vote is to encourage and push the primes and the small businesses to continue to make us the friendliest airport, but to continue to make us the airport that people want to come to. And by doing that is opening up and moving, taking the steps that are needed in order to open up. We have the ability to open up. Our travel is at capacity. I do understand that there is a push-pull me in the labor industry, but I'm a solution-oriented person, and let's come up with creative ways to recruit and maintain quality employees in our airport and provide what is necessary in order to keep them in our jobs. So my vote is a yes.
Stark.
I'll explain my vote. It's a yes. I think it's important we have a dialogue with the FAA, and so we need to submit these stipulations and see where we land. I want to make sure we get our airport fully reopened. I want to make sure that we have some money and funds for the primes to help the workers, to help the sub-primes. And I think it's important that we go forward and get the stipulations into the hands of the FAA and see what they have to say. Thank you.
Waring.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Callejo.
Yes.
Passes 6-3.
Thank you to all who participated in that item. We'll move to item 72, which is bus stop transit center cleaning services, request for award. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 72.
Second, second.
We have a motion and a second. We do have one member of the public to address the council. Mark Roudri, yes, the floor is yours.
Hello again, Mayor Kate Callejo and everybody at the Phoenix City Council. It's good to hear from you again, again, again. It's because I take the bus all the way to everywhere, to all around the places, and I always, I know I miss the free rides because the bus is back to normal for the front door, for the fairs and all that stuff. I have to buy a bus pass at a, at a Fries, Circle K and all that stuff. And it's because I always trying to get all the buses to get to the events that I wanted to go on my Facebook because I like going right on the bus, and I like to talk, I like all of you, talk to you guys again. And then also that, it's because I wish you could ask me questions about this bus thing because I like riding on the bus. I like riding everywhere, on going to the comic book store, going to the mall, going to the thrift shops and all that stuff. And I like to go everywhere because I like hanging time with you guys. And also, another shout out to Yasmim Ansari, Carlos Garcia, which I almost forgot, Betty Wondato, Laura Pastor, Jim Waring, Anne O'Brien, I almost forgot, and Sal DeCiccio. Again, Sal DeCiccio, I am not a fan of you, but if you say anything to me, I'm sorry, all right? Because I like talking to you guys, and I respect you, all of you guys. It's because, Mayor KG, I love having, talking to you guys, and I've been having fun with you. And also, I always like calling you from meetings and all that stuff. And I hope next Wednesday, I'm going to talk to you guys again on the third. It's because I like talking to you guys on the meetings. It's because I'm a District 7 resident, even though I am, even though I'm autistic, I'm an autistic high-function guy. And also, Mayor, have a great day. Happy Halloween again.
Thank you, Mark. Any council comments or questions? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio. Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Callejo.
Yes.
Woo-hoo!
Passes 8-0.
8-0. Item 73 is Phoenix Code Amendment Related to Household Hazardous Waste Program, Chapter 27. Will the city clerk please read the title?
Item 73 is for ordinance G6906 and ordinance relating to the household hazardous waste, amending Phoenix City Code, Chapter 27, Solid Waste, Sections 27-2, 27-3, 27-4, and 27-22.
Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve item 73.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
DeCiccio. Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Callejo.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Woo!
That is our final agendized item. We will next move to public comment, and I will turn to our city attorney to introduce this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments, but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
We have one patient member of the public to address the council. John Forsythe, the floor is yours.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. Are you getting the feedback?
It stopped after the first. Oh, no, I'll stop talking.
All right. So, Mayor, Council, my name is John Forsythe. I'm here today to talk about case reform. Are you really not getting the feedback?
We can understand you.
I'm getting it.
If you could please lower your volume a little bit.
Not sure.
If you could please lower your volume a little bit, I think that would help. Thank you very much.
Well, I think I just figured it out. I would like to discuss police accountability reform, but I want to discuss just the concessions with HMS and SSP for a total of 55 outlets. You know, those are 55 outlets that Phoenix police or Phoenix restaurants and businesses cannot get in or have to pay a premium to get in at the airport. And I think the airport should be a beacon for local businesses. So let me move on to what I really came here for. 65% of Americans believe that police need to be reformed, changed, and accountable. Mayor, we live in a nation with laws. This is one of the greatest achievements over the rest of the world. We all agree that those laws apply to every one employee. So why does the Phoenix Police not feel the same? I made these complaints several times. Back in college, one of my professors said that you can judge society's morals and values by looking at the government. I urge you to follow one of your officers and make the judgment for your own. Plain and simple, Phoenix places under investigation. Most people would be minding their Ps and Qs, which means on their best behavior, but nothing has changed. You cannot fathom how an organization that holds the public accountable every day refuses to be held accountable. I've talked to quite a few of your professional standard units, sergeants and lieutenants, and they agree with me that the police need to follow the laws, but they don't. So my question is, why is the police not on their best behavior? Because there's no accountability. So, where am I going with here? Is it just privilege? Is it ignorance? It is time that the police should be acting better because there's no consequences to do better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes today's formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. We are adjourned.